Alright, members of the council, staff, ladies and gentlemen who've joined us this evening. Our city attorney, welcome and thank you for attending. Today is October eighth, twenty twenty five. This is our regular city council meeting. I'm Michael Owens and grateful to have you here with us this evening. Um, we have, uh, we don't have too long of an agenda at council, so hopefully we won't keep you guys here too long tonight. With that being said, Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the call please?
Mayor Owens.
Present.
Councilmember Ron Davis of District One.
Present.
Councilmember Damian Oladapo of District Two.
Present.
Councilmember Keisha Jeffcoat of District Three.
Present.
Councilmember Patricia Alk of District Four.
Present.
Councilmember TJ Ferguson of District Five.
Present.
And Councilmember Deborah Herndon of District Six.
Present.
Coram present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you mind leading us in the application, please, sir?
Mister Mayor, my absolute privilege. If you would like to join us in prayer, please do so. Heavenly Father, we always pause and say thank you for the great city of Mableton that you've held in your hands since its inception. And you're blessed with great leaders on our council, wonderful citizens, good staff. So we thank you for all your blessings this night and we ask you to continue to bless this city with leadership by giving our council members discretion, discernment, wisdom, compassion, and courage to make the best decisions on behalf of the city. Bless our citizens, our public safety. We thank you for our public safety personnel being here tonight, watching over them, keeping them safe through all their endeavors as they protect us. We thank you for this and all your blessings. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Could you please lead us in the pleasurable light, sir? And Madam Clerk, if you cannot hear us, we know that music in this room can be challenging sometimes, so please just, please just let me know if you cannot hear us. Alright, council, we've been provided a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the or approve the agenda, sir.
I'm listening to the agenda, it's written.
Seconded. Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Ferguson.
Who, who made the motion? I'm sorry, I'm not.
Uh, Councilwoman Oladapo, seconded by Councilwoman Ferguson. I'll call question to all those in favor of approving the agenda, it's written. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna proceed along with our agenda. We do not have, um, any public hearings for this evening, so we're gonna move to item seven, which is our acknowledgements. Counsel, as you know, this week is Public Safety Appreciation Week. Uh, it is something that we strive to make sure we give a special nod to, uh, each year that at least has long have been in existence. We're doing the same again this year. Uh, I had had the distinct honor and privilege of traveling around quite a bit with, uh, some of the staff. Yesterday, I think we visited three fire, three or four fire stations, police precincts too. Uh, we also went to Puckett EMS. Um, we were fortunate enough to be able to, uh, provide them with some, some good food, some pizza. Thanks to our city attorney who stepped up to help put that bill. Uh, but we really just took some time to get out into the community and travel around to the stations. Uh, I wanted to personally make sure we was able to look them in the eyes, so to speak, and thank them for the work that they do, uh, for the courage that they have and ultimately for keeping us safe. Um, so in recognition of Public Safety Appreciation Week, uh, could we have our public safety members that are in here, please, uh, step up to the front? I know you guys don't like being front and center all the time, but I wanna put you on the spot. Ladies and gentlemen, these are but a few of the members, um, from, from our fire stations and from our police precincts that keep us safe every day. And, uh, we wanna say thank you. We appreciate you, uh, and we're honored to have you here serving in the city of Mableton. Um, so counsel, would you like to come up and we'll take a full picture, if you don't mind? I've asked our meeting chief to say a quick word.
So, uh, my name is John Dotlock. I'm the precinct manager over at precinct two. Uh, Ron, sort of department here, she's in the best, uh, she's the sort of the best station here, so. Uh, all of us at precinct two, um, thank you very much to the mayor and his office, uh, for taking the time to come by the precinct. Um, all the officers do appreciate it. I've got the easy job. The madam woman out there doing the job right there are, uh, are grateful for all the citizens, um, everyone. As far as stopping by, appreciate what we do. We thank you. We love, uh, working out in Mableton and doing everything the officers do, work for the community. And if anything you guys ever need from precinct two, please stop by. Uh, given myself and the captain are ready, the officers are probably happy to help you out. Thank you again for your contribution. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name, uh, Michael Cunningham, I'm the fire chief. And I'm here, I also thank you so much for coming to. Show the support that you have. Really appreciate it. Thank you for all your help in the stations. I'm just thinking, very happy to have pizza and support. So we never miss a meal. But, uh, I'm your, uh, as I said, I'm your fire chief. If there's anything that, uh, we can do for you, your comfire, please feel free to reach out to us. Even if you just have questions or want to stop in about the fire stations, you can just talk to us. We're here, here. So we're happy for all your support and, uh, happy to serve you. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you all again. Very much appreciated. Alright, council, we're gonna move on with the agenda. Um, don't have any appointments on eight. We're gonna move to nine, which is some public comment. Oh, oh, four, yes. We don't have any new, right, we don't have any new appointments, but we do have, um, one actual appointee. So it's a formality. Alright, so, yes, I stand, I am correct. We do not have any new appointments. Uh, but we do have an appointee from the last meeting, uh, that was not here and she's actually here today. So we'll be doing an appointment for District Three. Um, Councilwoman Jeffcoat has an appointee, Ms. Eileen. Um, you will be appointed. I think we do have an, um, a certificate and an oath. So let me grab that and if you will come to the podium and we will get your oath taken care of. Okay, council, we're gonna proceed to item nine on the agenda, which is public comment. Madam Clerk, I'm sure we have some public comment cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have four. Uh, just a reminder, there's two minutes. Deputy Clerk Benson will be keeping the timer over there. You should be able to see it from the po- podium. Our first person is Denny Wilson and following Ms. Wilson will be Dante Philpot.
And for those of you coming up to speak in public comment, again, I think the air is kicked on, so it's made acoustics even a little worse. So if you could really kinda speak into the mic, that would help.
Can you hear?
I can hear you now.
Alright, first of all, I want to give a big thank you to, um, the community for reaching out to me during my last speech here at public comment. Uh, I got overwhelming support from the community. I got direct messages up next door. I got text messages to my phone and I got calls. So I wanna say thank you to the community. I didn't know how much I was appreciated until then. Which brings me to my point. I will apologize for how I said it. But I would not apologize for what I said, uh, because I think it needed to be said. Um, I apologized for that last sentence of dropping the F-bone because I have three grandsons. And we don't use profanity in front of them. And when I left the podium and I looked out and I saw there were children there, and it really broke my heart that I had used profanity in front of those children because that's something that I do not do. And it will never happen again, whether there's children here or not. It will never happen again. I let my passion get the best of me. Uh, I've lived in this community a lot longer than most of you. And I have a divine love for this community. And I will not let anything that anybody say about me diminish my love and support for this community. I will keep on fighting no matter what and I will make sure that we get our fair share and we are treated right. And that this community is treated right. Thank you.
Dante Philpot and following, uh, Mr. Uh, Philpot is Angela Nguyen.
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you guys for the opportunity. Thank you for your time. My name is Dante Philpot. Uh, I am here representing the U.S. Community Task Force. Um, so just wanna intro- introduce or reintroduce ourselves to, to some and others. ACT is a, is a hyper local and local grassroots organization, um, aimed at systematically identifying and disseminating resources to, uh, to Mableton. Uh, we do it through our community development, economic, uh, family, family and youth education and justice for all communities. Um, ACT has been proud to publicly serve this community for the past twenty plus years, working diligently to empower residents with the knowledge and resources and navigate issues, uh, that impact our daily lives with unwavering, uh, commitment to inform, participation in the democratic process. Additionally, we have served with the utmost integrity to ensure that we do our best to represent the community and meet the needs of this community. One of the things that makes ACT remarkable is having leaders, candidates, elected officials, and representatives who have come through the halls of ACT and graduated forward to lead. We usually don't tour our own, uh, uh, excuse me, our own home, but I'm going to tour today. So some of the people that have came through, uh, ACT, it's our very own Chairwoman Lisa Cuban, Commissioner Monique Sheffield, uh, former Representative Erica Thomas, School Board Member Trey Hutchins, award-winning community activist advocate, Madam Delancey, uh, Michael Murphy, I don't think he's here tonight, uh, Councilman Ron Davis for District One, sitting right there, here with you right now, and our very own Mayor Michael Owens, which by, by the way, congratulations on South Cox, who's living here. We feel like we have to look at it, continue to work. Uh, but simply put, ACT, we produce leads. We don't hide from it. We don't run from it. And we're not gonna stop doing it now. To be frank, uh, this should be celebrated by the community and elected officials alike. We stand on the shoulders of those that came before us and we're gonna continue to be a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Angela Nguyen and then our last speaker, who's a man prior, call in, is Ruby.
Good evening, Mayor of Mableton, City Council. My name is Nazwa and I remember how we thrive over the side of the situation. All of us that think the passage is safe and help the housing of employees, we spoke that this is a step in the right direction. However, there is a high need for housing options for essential workers. With this area to have a lot of strong attraction with employees that make less than thirty thousand a year, that there needs to be a housing option that matches these talents. A person that thinks less than twenty dollars an hour cannot maintain rent over a thousand a month. If you prepare about all the methods to have a chance or decide it safely and help the housing, then you must be intentional on making sure that options for houses are priced right for essential workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lynn Pryor, and she's the last speaker.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanna bring the attention to veteran moral highway. We have a lot of high volume of drugs and trafficking and homeless in the area. I've been toward, toward the deputy and the police force letting them know that this has not been addressed. I have a business on the main road across from Bourbon and Coke Factory at Ross. And the traffic and things that's going on now is illegal. On the weekends, you have stylists working with no license. You have barbers working with no license. And you have nail techs working with no license. You have people on the streets selling shoes, furniture, and all type of things that do not need to happen in the city of Mableton. It's starting to look like a big fleet running. And the city is not open on the weekends, so they do not see what's going on. I do. So we need to address them, to have them come out during the weekend hours, so they can see exactly what's going on. What's gonna happen is, it's gonna end up on the news. And then we're gonna say, why nobody said anything? I have a business on that main road. I see it every weekend. And nobody has been out to address it. This is the third time that I've mentioned it. Shooting, fighting, people all in the middle of the street. It's crazy. Businesses are opening, doing business, clubs opening, hookah club clubs, no Mableton business license. You have to have a state business license in order to do hair, makeup, lashes, and barb. And I've seen this. I've sent pictures out and still, and I've been over to the city of Mableton and I also talked to a couple people. This is your district, uh, District Five, TJ, and I've still haven't heard any emails or any concerns back from anybody. And I'll pass the picture through. Hopefully we'll get this taken care of before we be on channel five.
Madam Clerk, do you have any more cards?
There's no more cards.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, being there's no more cards, we're gonna go ahead and close our public comment period, move along. Counsel, item ten was our consent agenda. Um, we have several items on consent agenda. One is the, thank you. Here's the city council meeting calendar for FY twenty twenty six. Regular meeting minutes for September twenty fourth, work session meetings for September twenty fourth. Um, a resolution that updates the fire authorization for the purchase of fleet vehicles. Uh, an approval to negotiate substantial form, all format documents referring to Hill Grove Vista. Which covered the final plat, the right of amendment, and the school order meeting and supremement that you have. Item F is approval to negotiate and execute substantial form, uh, relating to Sweet Lake Grove. And those are the items that are on our consent agenda. With that being said, uh, these are items that are carried over from our work session. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, please. Uh, ye- yes, ma'am, you are recognized.
Yes, Mayor, um, there is one item that is happening. It says, social, uh, and, uh, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, recent, it says, it just says, respect in the right way. There's some people that we have to get to, people, so it says, Mayor, consultation with city to reach the city attorney. It's here by authorized and finalized next, uh, meeting, uh, also, it's just, uh, meeting, uh, I think, uh, So it says, mayor consultation with city to reach the city attorney. It's here by all parts of the final lines next to the, to the meeting. Also, the petition to the meeting, and I think it's, um, to, I think it's. It's just, just think of Mayor, you know, the, the rest of the, 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 the.
So this, this right of way abandonment is, isn't this item two on item on section E? Okay, yes. Okay, so, so it's no change from what I, what I just read?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ferguson and properly seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Coates. I wouldn't call for questions, no further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion agenda please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nays, ayes have it, thank you council. Uh, we're now gonna move on to, uh, new business. We, we only have one item of new business this evening, that is, uh, a second read on the ordinance updated chapter six to seven, which is the special licensing regulatory fees in chapter five for alcohol license. Thank you. Uh, with that being said, uh, council, we've had one read on this already and brought up during our, during our work session on Monday, so I'm gonna go straight and ask if, uh, I could get a motion to approve this ordinance. Motion to approve the ordinance for the special licensing regulatory fees and chapter five alcohol beverages. I said. Thank you, motion's been made by Councilman Ferguson and properly seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Ock. Any further discussion? I, I heard this first. I often hear two people. I, I really try to, she, point two seconds, she got it in on you, I'm sorry. Um, with that being said, any discussion, council? Hearing no discussion, I wouldn't call for question, all those in favor of approval of the motion made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, ayes have it, thank you. Uh, with that being said, council, there is no other business in front of us or other items for discussion. With that being said, Mr. Manager, I will open the floor for any comments or announcements you may have, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Manager, I do have a few comments. Uh, again, want to say thank you to our public safety, folks that came out, uh, being a former firefighter, actually proud to see this today. I guess police, but, uh, that's some fire folks here. Uh, I just wanna say, uh, again, shout out Dr. Houston and her staff that helped her, all the staff that helped out on our jazz concert. I don't know if our citizens got a chance to attend the jazz concert, but it was a hit, we have some very happy citizens, so proud of that. Uh, wanna congratulate our finance department, um, and let the public know that we will be sending out assessments and start collecting for our Six Flags Special Service District, they're the center, so that has been activated, they're active, so you may be getting notices, um, from our city now instead of from the county, same thing was happening with the county, it's just transferred now to the city, so nothing, nothing that need, but just, uh, cities in place now to receive, assess, collect for Six Flags Special Service District. Also wanna congratulate council, uh, from what I understand, you all have been approved again, uh, second time for a, uh, council, a city of civility. So congratulations to this council, stand off the news, and, uh, keep it up. And then, um, I do wanna make an announcement that, um, for personal reasons that I can't disclose, uh, we, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Alejandro Farrell was no longer a code enforcement director. If you haven't reached out to him, the person you wanna contact is now the interim code enforcement director, Mr. Michael Hughes. Uh, we're gonna make sure that an email is put out, if anyone's trying to reach out to him and not get a response, that you would know that who you should contact for code enforcement issues we before. And last but not least, wanna thank our city attorney, who sponsored, uh, the mayor's tour of public safety with a lot of pizza and other things. And I wanna say thank you, Billy, for investing in our public safety, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Madam Attorney. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, did I skip you?
I have no comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilman Davis.
Uh, yeah, briefly, uh, okay, uh, congratulations to public safety, uh, actively. Celebrate, uh, I've always had, uh, relationship with public service, never sit out, but you guys are outstanding, so I just have to keep up with it. Uh, the other thing I just wanna mention is that, uh, I think we should, if all will, just pray for this nation in terms of the mass shootings that have been happening around the country. Uh, it is unfortunate, and I pray that, you know, something like that never happens in the city of Maple Leaf, Cobb County. But let's keep those families lifted because, uh, that is a tragedy. Uh, and the only other thing I'll say is that I regret I did not make the jazz concert. Being a musician myself, and that's my favorite genre, I just really hate that idea, but I'm gonna make them one next year. And, uh, everyone have a great night, oh, and Ms. Harris also, congratulations for being part of the licensing board as well. So everyone have a great night and, uh, be safe.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Oldham.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone, I just wanna again, uh, thank public safety, you all put your lives on the line for us every single day, for us, our families, so we are so grateful and appreciate it for what they do. Uh, secondly, have a follow-up, is Jasmine Allison? Oh, there it is, okay, so, uh, I am hosting the second annual, uh, NACA free homebuyer workshop. Uh, as many of you know, housing is a big issue, uh, challenge, opportunity, if you will, that we have in district two. And, uh, we are trying a lot of very creative solution, we recently had the housing symposium, and we're continuing to prioritize the education of our residents. And this is one of those initiatives that we, uh, are working on to be able to help, uh, residents who are interested in buying a home, be able to do that in a way that is, uh, that is just going to help support them to get what they need. And they're able to, uh, purchase a home with no down payment, no closing costs, no fees, uh, below market interest rate, and without a perfect credit. And we had the first, uh, NACA homebuyer workshop about a year ago, and it was about, actually, three hundred and fifty plus attendees were, um, at the workshop, and I still hear people talk about it. So I'm hoping that this second one will get a lot of people come out and learn how to be a homeowner. And, uh, also, I'm very appreciative of the Family Life Restoration Center for, uh, helping to sponsor this event, providing us with the venue, um, helping to make sure that whoever attend is comfortable and, uh, and enjoy, enjoy the workshop. So thank you, Family Life Restoration Center, Angela and Luther Washington, very appreciative of the work that you do for our community, I hope you're online and watching. But, uh, the event is on the eighteenth of this month, so next week Saturday, and, um, I do hope you're able to share this with anyone who you know, who is looking to be a homeowner, uh, they don't have to live in Mableton, uh, just, it's just open to the public. And please go to, uh, naca.com to register, thank you, and hope you all have a wonderful evening. We're getting out of here before eight o'clock, isn't that great? Knock on wood.
Yeah, we still have an executive session, they might get out of here, some people might be before you. Councilwoman.
I al- good, good evening, everyone, I always say that, um, I'm not gonna say anything, and then it gets to me, and everybody says all these great things, and so, I wanted to take an opportunity, I didn't even get a chance to go to your, uh, NACA program, uh, the event that you had last year, but hopefully I get an opportunity to go this year, because NACA is a great program, she is right, it is an awesome program for new homeowners. So, um, certainly, if you have an opportunity to attend, make sure you go out and attend that. And then I also wanna congratulate, uh, Ms. Aileen Harris, our district three nominee for a licensing board. Um, you know, these aren't paid positions, so she's volunteering her service, her time, and I just really appreciate you committing yourself to, um, serve on this board, so thank you for, um, I know I contacted you ad hoc, and I was like, okay, can you make it? So I appreciate you coming out today. I do wanna also take a point of privilege to acknowledge our public safety, as I said before, uh, we really appreciate all of your hard work and dedication. Um, you do so much in our community, you protect us, you keep us safe. And I also wanna acknowledge Chief Cunningham, my fellow, uh, leadership co- colleague, and all the public safety officers that are here, we thank you so much, and, um, we really appreciate you. Uh, our mayor, Michael Owens, I ended up, uh, not getting an opportunity to roast him, uh, uh, at the South Cobb Rotary Club, uh, but he did receive an award, the South Cobb Citizen of the Year Award, um, I think that's awesome. We're very proud of you, I ended up deferring to our city manager, but the next time, I will be sure to make sure that I roast you properly. Um, so I do wanna say, um, the government, there's a government shutdown, uh, and it's really adversely impacted our community. In particular, our veterans, um, some of our veterans, uh, aren't getting paid, and so, um, it's trickling down into our community. And so, if you, um, are a veteran, or you know anyone who's adversely impacted by the government shutdown, certainly feel free to reach out, um, you know, if I have any resources, um, I can point you in the right direction, I will definitely do that. But as, uh, Councilman David said, let's just continue to keep our nation uplifted in prayer, it's very important. Uh, we have a local election that's, that's, uh, happening, uh, local elections matter. Um, it's important that you use your civic responsibility and get out and vote. So I just wanted to point out and highlight a few, um, dates, advanced voting will begin on Tuesday, October fourteenth. So make sure that if you wanna get out and early vote, and then the election day will be Tuesday, November fourth, so make sure you don't sit this out. The city of Mableton's district two, four, and six are on the ballot. So you, you need to make your plan to vote, remind your friends, your family members, and let's show our power as a community, please get out and vote. And that is all I have, good night.
Thank you, Councilman Oldham.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for being here tonight, um, in addition to early voting starting on October fourteenth, there is a, uh, comprehensive plan community meeting. It is the final small focus group meeting that our comprehensive plan will be having. Uh, this will be hosted by Grace Consulting Group on October fourteenth at nine AM to one AM, uh, PM, nine AM, um, at the Ma- Mabel House Arts Center at fifty-two thirty-nine Floyd Road. Uh, you can register at mabletontwentyfortyfive.org. If you are looking for information about our comprehensive plan, it is not on our city website, it's on our, um, comprehensive plan website, that's mabletontwentyfortyfive.org. Uh, the area to be focused on is the Silver Comet Trail, specifically the area of Bates Road, Floyd Road, Concord Road, and Westfield Drive. I wanna thank all of those in, uh, with public safety here tonight, thank you for being here. And, uh, kinda segueing from public safety is the, uh, Mableton Pastors Collective is hosting a Faith in Blue Unity Walk. Uh, they do this every year, um, it will be Saturday, October eleventh at eight thirty AM at First Christian Church of Mableton, located at eight seventy-eight Old Alabama Road. They also have, um, a parade where we march with our, um, uh, public safety, uh, those in blue from, uh, the church to the Gordon Road Shopping Plaza, and it's not a very long parade, so it's, it's a, a nice time. And that's all I have tonight, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ferguson, floor is yours, sir. I'm gonna start out by saying thank you to our public safety team that's here. I've been in this community for twenty years, and I've never felt unsafe, and I appreciate it. I see you all out there, and I see you all, um, in the community, um, I, I, I see you constantly, I can go up and talk to any person, um, with a badge, and they'll speak to me, and they'll be kind to me, even though, even though I am a councilman, um, but they will have a conversation. And that is truly appreciated, because that is not necessarily the, um, the way that Cobb County was, um, shown to the public in the past. I appreciate it as a black man in Cobb County, I appreciate everything that you all do, and I appreciate the way that you do, so thank you. Um, with that said, I also appreciate the fact that you keep my daughter safe, because I am one hundred percent a, um, a girl dad. And just to represent how much of a girl dad I am, the Girl Scouts of America asked me to be a part of their inaugural Green Tie Guys. And we are basically working with the Girl Scouts, um, got some very, very interesting names that I'm working with to understand how to better promote the Girl Scouts, how to better do more things for the Girl Scouts, how to, um, bring more programming to the Girl Scouts. In fact, um, I talked to the CEO of the Girl Scouts of North Georgia, North Atlantic, and I said, stop trying to bring in more Girl Scouts, and just continue to educate more girls. And they, um, so, we're gonna do that, but it takes funding. So, um, of course, I'm asking you, um, this is the last few days, but, um, and I didn't wanna do it in this form, because I wanted to see what I could do without it. Um, but there is on the give dot Girl Scouts ATL dot org, you can go out there and you can, um, s- send some money my way, um, I'm currently in the lead, I will continue to, I will win, uh, um, and you can give to this cause to help us better understand how to work with and do things for our young ladies, so that they can grow up to be strong women. So, um, if you have an opportunity, if you have a desire, um, give dot Girl Scouts ATL dot org, and you can find, see the, um, Green Tie Guy, uh, campaign, and you can give to my campaign. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Warner.
Oh, okay, all right, and, and that's, uh, one, one of the things I wanted to mention, they were having a hard time hearing, um, the audio, and I think the video could be put out on a live broadcast tonight, but anyway, thank them for, uh, for tuning in tonight. I also wanna send a heartfelt thank you to our public safety officials and officers who are here tonight. You all do such an outstanding job in Cobb County, and I really appreciate all that you do and all the sacrifices that you make to keep us safe. So thank you so much, all deserve to be recognized for the wonderful job that you do. Um, and congratulations to our mayor, who is a very, very important person. And I only have one announcement, if you are a teacher or, um, just an academic, well, you don't have to be an academic, but if you're good in math and or English, um, the city of Mableton needs you. Um, we are looking for tutors who can tutor our young people while they're at school, um, for the summer. You know that a lot of times they lose a lot of what they learn over the summer, so it's really important to reinforce, um, that, that education over the school year. So if you're interested and you are strong in math and or English, um, if you can reach out to Gus at premiermartialartsostale.com, uh, you could definitely use it help, and that's important, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone, um, I wanna start off as well just by thanking our public safety officers. Um, it was a big headache yesterday, but I had a lot of fun running around to the cities and going to different precincts. Uh, you, you guys were, uh, were, were warm, you were, you were thankful, and I appreciated it, right? I mean, I, I think I, I, I took some time and learned a, a lot too, you know, we went up to Puckett EMS, and they got me into an ambulance, yeah, I was fine, it was okay, but, got me into an ambulance, uh, and, uh, just, just to get a glimpse, right, of what goes on every single day, and, and one of precinct two is during shift change, and, um, you know, just, just got to, just, it, it really took me back kinda when I was in Moncor, and, uh, I would be on watch, you know, for twelve hours, or eight hours on, eight hours rest, eight hour recovery, and, um, I, so I have a little glimpse of what that's like, right? With, with being, um, having to be available a- at, at any time, um, and running towards things when everyone else is running away from them. And, uh, so we, we can't thank you enough, um, you know, one week, one day, it's, it's a grand gesture, but we hope you guys know every day that we support you, uh, and we appreciate the work that you do, so thank you. I also wanna give a shout out to, uh, to my staff, um, all the staff of the city, um, for the work that you do. There's, there's talk about me getting the South Cobb Citizen of the War, of the Year Award, um, that's only a reflection of the work that we all do collectively, right? The work that, that our staff does, um, day in, day out, um, the work that the staff of the office of the mayor does. Um, as we continue to grow, the, the number of calls that we get, the number of emails, the number of text messages, only continues to grow. And, um, you know, our, I, I tell folks every day, our, we, we have to be responsive, right? There is, there is no excuse, uh, for us not being responsive. We may not have the answers right away, uh, but there's no excuse for not responding and doing our best to get to where they need to get to. So, um, a shout out to all the staff, uh, for, for doing that work and constantly making sure that we are adhering to the needs. What I, what I say, that the, the needs, the wants, the concerns, the issues, the fears, the hopes, the dreams, all of those things, uh, are wrapped up into what we are trying to provide. You know, I, I, I wanna say something here, um, I never want this to be a situation where it's us versus them, and I don't know why this is starting to kinda creep in, like, there is some discernment that exists between this council and those people who we represent. Every single person on this council lives in this city, and many of us as well have lived here for a long time. Um, but we care, we're deeply passionate about what we do and why we're doing it. And I, I don't, I don't want there to be, I, I, I read and I see this stuff online sometimes, but it seems to be growing for some reason, and, and I don't, I don't know exactly why. Um, but, but we are, every single one of us are citizens, we're residents of the city, um, and we care, and we care deeply. And I, I do not want some manufactured rift to come up, like it's gotta be us versus them. This, this is, this is not why we wanted this city, this is not why we're here, and it's not gonna be a tone or a tenor that I'm ever gonna accept as mayor, right? We, we are one, um, we, we are the elected representatives of the city, um, but we are simply an extension of the people that voted us in the office and the government. So I, I am compelled to say that, because I wanna make sure that we're all moving forward, and, and we know that we're, it's election time right now, and I get it, but we are all still one community that's moving forward for the betterment of the city. I also wanna say, um, this month is Hispanic Heritage Appreciation Month, uh, with September fifteenth to October fifteenth. So, um, for all of my people, Latino descent, mi ente de gas ahí, um, we have a lot of, of, of gratitude and respect. So este momento es para, para todos, para la comunidad, para la música, para la comida, para la cultura, es para todos, el vestido y todo. Y con los honras hay para ti también. Um, the food, the culture, the everything is part of what makes us who we are as a community, my heart is part of your heart, and we will go forward together. Wanna get to a couple of quick things that some meetings that we've had, um, we are, we are still working with Six Flags, had a meeting with Six Flags just this morning, uh, to talk about how we can continue to better partner together, um, because public safety officer here, again, I wanna thank y'all as well. Um, when I first became mayor, we came on, things were a little tumultuous, right? And I think the partnership that Six Flags, the city, and our public safety, uh, agencies have had, has really made, uh, made Six Flags in the area better close, right? And I visit Six Flags a lot, um, my kids go there a lot, and I tell people, I'm on top, it is, it has changed for the better. Uh, and a lot of that is because of, um, the, the work that we've collectively done with that. So, um, Six Flags recognizes that, we'll continue to partner, partner more on the work that we're doing with them, so more things to come from there. Also, we continue to support our schools, right? We find ways to support our schools, we're not over the schools, we don't control about what goes on in those schools, um, but many of us here, um, are, are very much aware, uh, and doing what we can to improve what goes on in our schools. Several of us were at Riverside Elementary a few weeks ago, we were, we were out, uh, doing beautification efforts, and I hope that's gonna continue. Um, this past weekend, Clay Harmony Leland had their fall festival, and some of you guys were there as well, it was a great turnout they had this year. Um, it was just a fun activity to be able to go out and to support, uh, our schools. Um, I also attended another school just today, which is technically not in our city, um, but I think we sur- they're a peninsula, we surround them on three sides, it's Whitfield, uh, Christian School. And the reason I went to Whitfield, um, there's a several reasons, but the one I wanna hone in on is that, um, they still carry a Mableton address, a Mableton zip code, um, and technically, they're not in our city, um, but things that happen in our schools impact the city and vice versa. Uh, there are many Mableton residents that send their kids there, so there are many, um, Whitfield parents that live in our city, um, educators and teachers, and so it was very important for us to not leave Whitfield out, and we're talking about schools that have an impact in our, in our community. Uh, many people will move to our community and directly send their kids to, to Whitfield, and that's fine, that's okay. Um, I'm a public school advocate, and will continue to be so, uh, but I think it's important, and we're talking about the landscape of education that can be provided, uh, to those people that are in that area that we do not miss out on our, on our private school, because they're part of this tapestry of educating our students. So, um, last thing I wanna say is that, uh, two quick shout outs, one to, uh, Mayor Thurman in Powder Springs, they had their, um, city hall grand opening this past week, I don't know if anybody got an opportunity to go, but a shout out to him, and a shout out to, um, Mayor Mario Avery of Fairburn, Georgia. Mayor Avery, every year has a fantastic fall festival and parade, and when I tell you guys parade, um, it was estimated there was twenty thousand people. And so, uh, there was, there was mayors and elected officials from across the regional area, it's, it's his thing, it's the way he likes to do it, to bring people together, and be able to celebrate community through that, so when I think about things that we're doing and how we're growing, uh, you know, they had twenty thousand people at their, at their festival, so I thought that was incredible. He's also, um, uh, not running for reelection, so I wanna thank him for the work that he's done. Uh, we have a Chick-fil-A that just opened, um, right outside of Mableton, right on Barrett Parkway, um, and we will have another Chick-fil-A that will be opening, uh, in the next several weeks here in Mableton off of, uh, Veterans Memorial down by the Publix. Uh, we continue to grow, and we will support organizations that come in, new jobs that come into our city, we will also continue to support our small businesses, uh, we'll continue to highlight them and elevate them for the work that they do. Uh, I think I'll end talking about voting as well, because, um, this is election season coming up, we also have, um, not just local elections, there's an election for a state senate, senate thirty-five, um, that is coming up both for the unexpired term and for the new term, uh, for senate district thirty-five, and also the PSC, which is Public Service Commission. Not a lot of people talk about Public Service Commission, but they can control, uh, the rates for electricity and many other things, and, uh, so make sure you're educated, prepared, have a plan to vote, and ready to go show up when the polls open. Uh, vote early, vote often, but only once. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's all that we have, council, um, I will entertain a motion to move us into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to move us into executive session for real estate personnel and, and litigation.
I said. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Ferguson, uh, all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. Uh, if you will not be with us when we return for executive session, thank you for coming, we duly appreciate you and look to see you at our next city council meeting, thank you.